The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council's meeting of the Joint Board, which is the Board of Finance and City Council. Before we start our meeting, I'd like everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the members of the Joint Board please introduce themselves, starting on my far right?
Marie O'Brien.
Mike LaMoth, Board of Finance.
Orlando Kelfi, Board of Finance.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zapposassou. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular Joint Board meeting from July 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion clarification. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two is our consent calendar. Items two, A through L, is there a motion to waive the reading of the consent calendar?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any items on the consent calendar, A through L, that members of the Joint Board would like to pull out for further discussion or questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar, A through L?
Motion to approve.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, to reduce the appropriation and borrowing authorization for the Memorial Boulevard Community Center Phase One project to $153,160 as of June 30th, 2018.
Move approval.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, to make additional appropriations totaling $442 within the Capital Projects Fund as of June 30th, 2018. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is to reduce the appropriations totaling $1,9992 and $431 within the Capital Projects Fund as of June 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, to make transfers totaling $669,897 within the Capital Projects Fund as of June 30th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is our monthly revenue and expense report presentation by Controller Diane Waldron.
Hi, everyone. So you have the August report in front of you. This was, you actually have two reports. You have the June, for June 30th, 2018, and then you have through July, really, the end of July, beginning of August, for the new fiscal year. But I'm going to concentrate more on last year, just to let you know where we did end up the year. And again, granted, subject to audit, I mean, we're in the middle of going through the audit, but I think this gives you a pretty good picture of where we are. As I've been reporting over the last few months, the tax revenues came in very strong. They actually exceeded the budget estimates by 1.08 million. Licenses fees and permits, they exceeded the budget by 608,000, but that was primarily because of the building revenue fees. The building permits, those came in $555,000 over budget. And then our investment earnings did extremely well, actually exceeded what I had thought we would. We were at $914,000, and we had $325,000 budgeted. So we did really well in those three areas, which definitely will help offset the shortage in the state revenues, where we did end the year at 3.7 million deficit. However, we still were pending the school readiness grant of about $268,000, so the deficit's about 3.45 million. So that's where we are at the end of the year with regard to revenues. With regard to expenditures, we're kind of closing everything out now. Everything is where I had anticipated, mostly in the public works areas with maintenance and snow removal. I wanted to give you an update on the Board of Education. In my report that you have in front of you, we have that the Board of Education has been updating their estimated deficit, and then what I reported here was 500,000. I did receive more information today. That number is 415,000, that they will be coming to the Board of Finance for at your next meeting at the end of August. But to offset that, there's a grant for the displaced students that they've been talking about. They estimate that grant to be about $273,000. So the net deficit will be approximately 141,000. I, because we don't have that grant yet, we have nothing in writing, nothing official. I am asking that they come to the Board of Finance for the $415,000. Once we receive the notification from the state that we're getting that 273, we will record that as receivable at the end of the fiscal year and a revenue to the general fund. So that's how we will handle that. And just let the Board of Finance know, there will probably be a request from contingency. There are sufficient funds in contingency to cover that 415,000. And we would rather do that than increase the bottom line of the budget. So you will see that in a couple of weeks. With regard to 2018-19, the only thing that I do want to report, and I'm not sure if I mentioned this last month or not, but there was a change in the Alliance Grant. The Alliance Grant recalculation actually is going to take away 410,000 from the ECS grant that we had budgeted. At the time that we put the budget together, we were going off of what we had been told that the Alliance Grant would be, the same as the prior couple of years. And after the budget was passed, the state budget was passed, then went back and they recalculated the Alliance Grant, and the Alliance Grant actually is going to increase 410,000, but it's going to reduce the ECS Grant. So overall, we're still getting the same money, but it's just a matter of does it go to the general fund, or does it go to the Alliance Grant? So there will be, right now, a shortage in the ECS Grant of about 410,000. So I just wanted to report that here, just as an update. So I think that's it for 2018-19. There is a couple of other things I did want to report on. I know the Board of Finance has been spending a lot of time, especially during the budget, we talked about the Kronos system. I wanted to report tonight that we actually will be going live with City Hall employees by the end of this month. We've been testing it. We actually had this week, two departments in City Hall, Public Works and Parks, all of their administrative staff go live on the system, and it flowed into Munis and imported into Munis well. I mean, we had a few little bumps along the way, but other than that, it's one of these things that as we go with it, we're dealing with each situation and correcting. It's just mainly programming things as we're going through. But we feel confident that next week we'll run fine, run smoothly, and then the rest of City Hall will be going live August 30th. So I just want to say that the departments have been working really hard to get this running and having everything transfer over from the Kronos system into Munis. Parks, Public Works, or the other outside areas that are using it as well right now, so we're making progress. And I think that's all I wanted to report on. And then the Board of Finance will be getting the year-end transfers at the August meeting as well. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to...
I have one question, Diane. In terms of the shortfall with the Board of Ed this past year that we're, you know, juggling around with whether we're going to minimize it or however, do we think that we got everything buttoned down that's going to avoid that one going forward?
As far as...
As accumulating the shortfall in the first place?
On the special education costs? We hope so. I mean, I think what they did when they put the budget together this, for the current year, I think they looked at their specialized costs realistically, and I think that was, they did try to account for what they knew of at the time. I mean, if you look, I think prior years, I think the excess cost was around $2.3 million, and this current year it was 4.3, and they did account for that in their budget for next 2018-19. I know when they put their budget estimates and the expected grant, they did expect to get the 4.3 million. So I'm hoping that that will, that they've identified that and they can move forward with that. But I know the business managers have been working really, really hard on that to account for everything.
Mike, I'd like to add to that, that as you know, we had the audit, the procedural audit of the Board of Ed, and a lot of the recommendations that came out of that audit were to encumber and make sure there were contracts that are signed and received and entered and monitored, and not only have the review of the business office, but also the staff that was working on behalf of that child. So there's a lot of check measures that have been implemented and put in place, and with our business manager over there, Jill, I'm confident we're not going to see a repeat of many of those items. They've taken to heart many of the recommendations that Bloom has put in place, and as you know, Bloom is our auditors now. I'm sure they'll be making sure those procedurals, procedures are implemented.
One of the examples of that is through the encumbering of their salary line. There was $200,000 at the end of the year that they were able to account for through that process. So I think, I think process and protocol has greatly improved, but we also had some good news this week that State Representative Zayogas had negotiated with the State Department of Education, and they have agreed to come to Bristol to do a second audit of the EDO-01 form, which means that even if the money is not made available to us right now, but it may be made available during the process of that EDO-01 form going through this year, that there is an opportunity that we may recoup that $500,000 in change that we lost off of that report that was filed last year. So that was really good news this week as well.
Yeah, and I do know that encumbering the payroll was the first thing that they, they did, and they worked really hard. They were determined to get that done. I think by the end of January, they actually had that done, so, yeah, I think, I think it'll work better next year.
Yeah, and I think just for the Board of Finance, I think it's really important, when you look at going back to the Kronos project, I mean, in essence, what ended up happening this summer is this project was transferred to the Controller's Office from another department, and they literally just decided to rip the Band-Aid off. This project has been languishing since 2014. The original Board of Finance purchase was $192,000, and we pay almost $3,000 a month in service fees, and this project was not working. So really, kudos to Diane and her staff for making it work, because this was one of those things where we're actually worried that some of the time clocks are now actually obsolete, that have been just sitting here for three years as we've attempted to implement, you know, from a perfection standpoint, as opposed to just working through some of these bumps, which really didn't end up being that terrible. So I think this is going to be something that's really going to add to the efficiencies, as well as accountability for employee time, and make it easier for the employees, too.
And less paper.
Yes.
Is that it?
One more thing.
Is there one person that everybody can go to regarding
the Kronos?
She's not going to like the answer, but...
Well, you know, I mean, I think at the end of the day, it was such a difficult issue to get up and going in the first place. You know, now you don't want to see people dropping the ball because they're not exactly sure who to go to the next level with.
I don't think that will happen. We actually have, you know, IT has been involved, you know, Scott Smith and I, actually, when we sat down and we looked at where we were in July, we just made the decision to just push it out there and just let everybody sink or swim. And it was not that bad. I mean, everybody was set up in Munis. The Personnel Department had actually done most of that setup, so everybody was in the system. It was just a matter of working out the little tweaks of where do they get charged to, how many hours do they work a day, what's their work schedule? Those were the things that we just had to work with, and as people were using it, that's how we identified what needed to be fixed. So as far as the point person, it's either Scott Smith, myself, or Jody McGrane in my office right now. And Jody's been a really big help in moving this forward, really. She understands the system well. So, not one person, there's three.
That's it. No more questions.
Okay, so we do have one additional business item that I would like to ask to be brought onto the agenda by the form of a motion, and that would be to consider the review of bids received for the cleanup of 894 Middle Street, if someone would be so kind as to make that motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So this, just by form of explanation, we are actually doing this in the reverse. We have a grant that we've received in a bid to clean up the contaminated site that is known as 894 Middle Street, which is across the street from ESPN. We do have some time-sensitive issues with this, so instead of waiting an entire month, we had a special Board of Finance meeting at 7:40. We are now going to take...
6:40.
6:40. We had, we're going to bring it onto the agenda for Joint Board. It will be pending approval at the City Council meeting, and then this item will be handled, and it will go back to the BDA for Don Ledger and Justin to handle, and hopefully get that resolved. As you know, it's many acres of sellable property, once we're able to clean it up in a very attractive zone. So this is a real priority for the city in order to move this forward. So we are going to replicate the motions that were made at our special Board of Finance meeting. I am going to give the first one to you and the second one to you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to transfer $300,000 within the Capital Nonrecurring Fund and to recommend approval of the action to a joint meeting of the City Council.
Yes, and then pending approval of the City Council. We already did Board of Finance.
I'm sorry. City Council pending approval, or...
Of the City Council.
Pending approval of the City Council.
Second.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Does everyone understand what we're doing?
Besides that.
Besides that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Your Honor, to make an additional appropriation of $300,000 within the Capital Projects Fund for the remediation of the Brownfield site at 894 Middle Street, pending approval by the City Council.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then one other piece of good news to end the night, as we go through and try to button down some of the outstanding issues from previous years, we did have a meeting with DEEP, and it appears that we may have a balance in our Pine Lake Grant Fund, and we are going to refer that over to the purchasing agent and see if in fact that the Engineering Department has any use for those funds, and maybe get some additional work done there, based on that original allocation from the state. So we will keep you apprised as to that, because there will need to be some action from the Joint Board, as well as the Board of Finance, probably for reallocation purposes. If there's no further business, a motion to adjourn would be appropriate?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the August City Council meeting. We are going to ask that those of you who are able to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the members of the City Council please introduce themselves, starting on my far left?
Josh Maderos, District 1.
Dave Mills, District 3.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Mary Fortier, District 3.
Greg Han, District 1.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zapposassou. Councilwoman Kelly is at the Board of Education monthly meeting, which unfortunately, due to last night's primary election, shifted all of our meetings to a night. He will be joining us shortly. We do have some media presence tonight, so if it was okay with the City Council, I'd like to ask that we move up our announcement section to the agenda, to the first part of the agenda, so that we can accommodate any other scheduling needs that they may have, and we can share our good news about what's happening in Bristol today with the world.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on moving announcements to the first item of the agenda. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So tonight, we are very excited to make public something that the Bristol Development Authority and the Mayor's Office has been working on for about three months. It became known to us at the beginning of the summer, and maybe a little before, that we had interest from Amazon to come into Bristol and launch their first-ever delivery point station here as part of their new business plan, where they're going to be doing the, quote, "last mile", which means they're going to have a center here, and that is going to be the last point where a package touches an Amazon employee before it's brought to people's actual addresses. So we are going to have, in our 229 Technology Park, Amazon Logistics, and they are actually launching at the end of this month. And the big piece of what we're very excited about is the fact that this is going to add to the jobs mosaic of what we offer here in Bristol, and it is going to be a very unique type of permanent part-time positions to start with, and right at the onset, they're going to be ramping up with 100 new jobs, starting on August 25th. So in terms of what this means for Bristol, we as policymakers are going to welcome them, because we have a very strong reputation in terms of economic development and welcoming all kinds of businesses. This one's unique in that the majority of their job slots are going to be used from 1:00 AM until 8:00 AM, which is their busy time in terms of moving those packages and getting them ready for delivery and pickup by the delivery systems. They will also be doing swing shifts in the morning that are part-time permanent, as well as an afternoon part-time permanent. The exciting news, however, is that as they ramp up for whatever Amazon deems their peak delivery times, as well as increased demand times, and I'm assuming part of that is probably their holiday schedule, they're anticipating that their jobs are going to increase, you know, much more. One estimate that we heard was 500. We had somebody else from their team tell us it could be more. We are going to be remaining conservative and just say, there's going to be additional jobs coming here as their peak season comes through the holidays. What's really important, though, for the role that we have here, is to understand the need of connecting our community to these jobs. Our industrial park has been a boon to our grand list ever since it was put into place in the late '70s, early '80s, and it continues to pay dividends. But what hasn't happened is the connectivity of public transportation, and so today, we spent some time communicating with the Office of Commissioner Redeker at the Department of Transportation, with our friends in the Governor's Office, DECD, and actually, Noggett Valley Council of Governments, of which we belong, are a member, and we are relying heavily on their transportation strategy people that are on staff there, to help us create a strategy in order to bring public transportation to that end of our city. Not only do we have our industrial park, but we have ESPN, we have a hospital, we have a hotel, many of these run third shifts. So really, the challenge is going to continue to be connecting these jobs with the people in our community, because Jobs First for Bristol is important, but we're also understanding that we're part of a region. And our transportation challenges, while being much improved with the new fast-track buses, which you see frequently coming through Bristol, our local routes, as well as our extended regional routes, they're not going to be enough to sustain an effective operation and have people connected with these jobs. These jobs are going to be perfect for people who are actually entering the workforce, they're going to be perfect for people who may need the extra income of a second job, or for those families that actually need the flexibility and have to flex schedules because of childcare or other issues. So it's really important to us to make sure that we do this in the right way, and we're really relying on our state partners and as well as our other, the planning agencies and others, to help us get this done. Most importantly, we are just really thrilled that we are going to have yet another Fortune 500 company here in Bristol, and I think that with this business plan and the connectivity that we're going to have, especially within the region, that we're hoping that this growth actually exceeds their expectations as well. So with that being said, we did have some Amazon friends stop by today, and they brought us some T-shirts, and so, in order to be in the spirit, you're going to wear one for the meeting. You can wear one for the meeting. And a large. Councilman Mills, you can have one, too. You go to a lot of sporting events. Josh, you can have a koozie, because you're young.
Oh, thank you.
And Greg. You like craft beer, you can have that, too. And I will keep my pens. So, this has been a really great day. I want to thank Justin Malley for all of his help. It's been a little crazy. There was a lot of issues that arose that really needed to be dealt with on a day-to-day basis, but finally, over the weekend, we finally felt that things were solidifying, the connections were made with corporate, the connections were made with the staffing agencies, and tonight, we are going to, at about, I think, scheduled for 7:45, on our Facebook Mayor's Office page, will be all the access information for people who are interested in applying for these jobs. There will be a link that they will click immediately. And the really nice thing, the way they do this, is that you will be able to apply online, you will be able to do an assessment online, you will then be emailed from Amazon Logistics and told to come to a hiring event, and we have in fact offered them space here at the City Hall in order to facilitate that due to our central location. You will come in, you will give permission for a background check, you will give permission for a drug screening that they will do on-site with a swab test. for a drug screening that they will do on-site with a swab test. At that point, you will be offered a contingent offer of employment pending the outcome of your background and your drug screening, and you will then be emailed your schedule. So, this is something that can have an automatic economic impact almost immediately on families who may need these types of positions. So, that additional information about the staffing, and I encourage those of you who have Facebook access to share our page and get it out to as many people, because, again, as a community, the more people that we can have employed or have the means to earn incomes that can bolster their family incomes, the better off we're all going to be. Does anybody have any questions in general about what we're doing?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. I'd like to ask for a five-minute recess so that the media that are here covering us can disassemble and dismantle what they need to do without disrupting our meeting, and if any of us are available, we can answer any questions that you may have. But is there a motion for a five-minute recess?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned until 7:25. Thank you.
Nice job.
Okay, I'd like to ask for everyone to come back into our regular session following our recess, so a motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I will turn the agenda over to Therese for a reading of our agenda items, starting with item two.
Approval of minutes of the regular City Council meeting on July 10th, 2018, special meetings on July 19th, 2018, and July 31st, 2018, and public hearing on July 19th, 2018.
Move to accept.
Second. Any discussion on any of the sets of minutes that were distributed? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Your Honor, I have to abstain to July 31st. I wasn't in attendance.
Okay, please note Councilman Proleski's abstention for July 31st. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is public participation, and we have a nonprofit spotlight featuring our Greater Bristol Realty Corporation, and speaking on behalf of that organization is Craig Minor.
Good evening, Mayor Zoposasu and members of the Bristol City Council. My name is Craig Minor, and as Treasurer of the Greater Bristol Realty Corporation, I want to thank you for this opportunity to share with you our story. The GBRC is a very small, all-volunteer, 501(c)(3) whose mission is to create first-time homeownership opportunities for moderate-income families in Bristol. Using the individual and varied expertise of our board members, the GBRC acquires underutilized land in residential neighborhoods and converts it into building lots. We then partner with other nonprofits to put houses on those lots and to match them with moderate-income, first-time homeowners, homebuyers. Our first project was a three-lot subdivision off of Lake Avenue in 2015, where we worked with Habitat for Humanity and ESPN to create three new homes. We also partnered with Habitat to build a single house on Benham Street in 2016. Our current project is a three-lot subdivision on Pine Street. This is a piece of land that was left over when DOT built the expressway from Forestville to Route 229. GBRC bought the parcel from DOT, and we are in the process of having it approved by the Planning Commission as three building lots. After the subdivision is approved, the GBRC will convey those lots to Neighborhood Housing Services of New Britain. NHS is working with local architect Charles Nyberg and Liberty Bank to construct three houses and to obtain affordable mortgages for the buyers. Our past projects have been exclusively new construction, but the GBRC would love to tackle a rehab project. So, if anyone knows of a nice fixer-upper that we can get for a song, please let me know. We are also looking to expand our Board of Directors, so if you are interested in helping us with our mission of first-time homeownership for moderate-income, first-time homeowners, please call me. With me tonight are two of our five board members, Lyndon Lubrko and Dave Haberfeld. Our President, Mark Reich, is in California this week. So, thank you again, Mayor Zoposasu, for this opportunity to let folks know about the GBRC. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that it was a very appropriate timing, even though it wasn't intended, since we're actually having a conversation about jobs, and the housing data profile that we're going to talk about next shows that Bristol's annual median household income is only $61,478, which is 13% less than Connecticut's median household income. We have a lot of housing income issues, and the housing wage for Bristol for 2017 is $23.31. That's what people spend per capita on housing, and so, quality housing is especially important. So, I think that this is something that we work with within code enforcement, it's something that the Neighborhood Housing Services is going to be a great partner with, and it's something that I think with BDA, there could be opportunities to partner with and leveraging their funds as well for housing rehabilitation.
Yes, I believe the NHS will be approaching the BDA for some funding.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are actually part of Sustainable Connecticut, an energy group, and we have a partnership for strong communities housing data profile. Is anybody here to present on that? So, basically, this has to appear on our agenda in order for us to continue our work with Sustainable Connecticut. And what it is, and it was attached to our agenda, it is dissemination and an education piece for council members, as well as members of the public, becoming more familiar with our median household income, which I mentioned earlier. We are about $5,000 less than Hartford County, and we are about $10,000 less than Connecticut in general. There is also some really interesting information included in this report concerning our housing costs for owners and renters, the characteristics of our housing stock, housing costs and income, and our market information. So, for any of you who might have had the opportunity to review our data profile, there's a really good story behind the numbers, but it's also something that we need to be cognizant about as we continue to implement our Plan of Conservation and Development, as well as look at other opportunities. And also, just really recognize that we have a large amount of our socioeconomic population spending a lot of money on housing. Okay, for public participation signup, I have one person, and it is Sean Ruest from Lancaster Road, and he would like to speak to us on the TIF proposal.
I was wondering, is that information available for the public?
It is attached to our council agenda.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, I spoke at the special meeting, so I know, you know where I'm coming from with the transparency issue with the TIF proposal. Public hearing, you only had two people speak, one of them was a member of the city government, the other one's myself. I spoke to about 50 people last night at the polls, asked them if they were aware that there's a special meeting with the City Council for a public hearing for TIF master plan. Not one single person was aware. I also spoke with people in passing at work and around the community, and no one's aware of it. Unfortunately, the plan that the city had on their website was absent of details. I appreciate it. Justin Malley gave me some information that he does have, that's got some numbers punched in there. I'm not sure if they're solid or whatever, but one concerning thing, it says estimated maximum public indebtedness, $40,850,000. I think that's a really huge number. I think the public should be aware of that. The public should also be aware about what we're using, the tax incremental financing master plan for. The state legislation pretty much falls in line with what city document says, but it details it a little bit more, talks about transit orange development, affordable housing, addressing blight, property acquisition, and in particular, property acquisition using whatever means are allowable by state law. We all know the state can use eminent domain to take property, so I'm very concerned about that, and I really strongly urge the city to reach out to property owners within this TIF district. If we're going to create a district that's going to be specific to property owners from West Street all the way to down South Street and to Bellevue, all the way to Route 6, and it gives different opportunities and also different concerns to people that live in the area, they need to be made aware of that. Just simply referring to the plan of development does not inform the public, does not give representative government or transparency through this process. If you look back three years, you can't look at it in the city website because all of the minutes got wiped out when we redid the website or for whatever reason, but you can still look on my YouTube channel, and you can see a bunch of people came because they were really concerned that a private developer called Renaissance Downtowns was going to build, I don't know if you want to call it market-rate housing or affordable housing or the terms I think are interchangeable. Right over here, they wanted $6 million of taxpayer money to build that building. More people came up and spoke against that proposal than spoke in favor of it. The newspaper sadly was devoid of the details of that. City minutes, actually, were kind of the same, and so, I mean, we're light years away from informing the public, and I think this is a huge thing. $40 million possibly to spend on, I know, I understand it's not in cement or whatever, but it's just, we're not going about doing this the right way. I don't think it's not, it's not proper, it's not representative government. That's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Okay, and just to be clear, we're not spending $40 million on anything.
Well, it says maximum public indebtedness, $40 million on the paper that your development authority.
Right. Nothing's, nothing's being spent at this point. Councilman Proleski, did you want to address?
Maximum amount of indebtedness.
Okay.
You know, Sean, I've always respected you because you are the champion of transparency, and you keep everybody on their toes, because earlier in the meeting, you said that some of the information that might have been out on the website might not have been up to date, and I think Justin wanted to check that out to make sure it is up to date, because those things are, it's a process, as you know.
I appreciate that.
But, you know, in fairness, one of the comments you made was that we haven't done a good enough job, and that's a relative term, right, in terms of what we can do to educate people.
It's my opinion.
Listen, that's fine. I respect that. The point is, it's a very complicated issue, and it's very difficult to boil it down to a level, you know, it takes more like one-on-one, it takes more interaction than sometimes a general statement can make, because it's very complicated. We've published a lot of different things, and we've gotten questions over and over again, which suggest that it's very difficult material to represent. We've had public hearings, we've just had charter revision going throughout the summer. Our ordinance committee, we've had probably 10 public hearings, and we've had one person, maybe you, attend these things. So, you know, that's not our fault. We try our best, and we, as a body here, I will tell you, all these people I work with here are always open to phone calls. We work weekends of doing some of this stuff, and it's really got to be a two-way street. I respect your point of view, but it's a relative term. You know what I'm saying?
I'm not going to try to pick apart, you know, what members of the council did and didn't do, or what the newspaper did or didn't do, press releases. I mean, I could do that, but it's not going to do anybody good. I'm just saying.
No, I agree.
We can do better. I mean, look back at the Plan of Conservation and Development. I listened to our former city planners say, "It's really hard to inform the people about what is going on and let them know there's a public meeting and get them to come to it," and I totally understand that. But I stand firm on my belief that if the city took the money they spent on donuts and water and stuff, then put it in the back of the building, and they put a postage stamp on the plan of development and sent it to people that are on the Route 6 corridor, it would have cost about the same amount of money. And the city's shelter can do it, we can do it. If I can create a Facebook page and share a public hearing with everyone, so can each and every one of you.
Listen, my only point is, my only point is, listen, I respect your point of view, but I want you to know that this, we can only do so much. No, listen to me. All this stuff is important, and when we reach out, you know, there's got, it's got to be a two-way street. I don't want people to think that we don't try, because that's not the case. It's a relative term. We could always do better, right?
I could only offer you advice on how to do better. I cannot make you follow my advice.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your point of view.
Thank you. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to address the City Council that may have missed the public signup for public participation? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on to our announcement section. We have three employee recognitions that I'm going to go through briefly. The first one is that we've just received notification from the State of Connecticut's Office of Policy and Management that Tom DiNoto, our assessor, has been appointed to the Certified Connecticut Municipal Assessor Committee. And this is something that is very hard to do. It's a very competitive process, and I think that he will serve us well in representing Bristol, as well as bringing his knowledge to that committee. And I think that I just want to make sure that everyone recognizes the extra time and effort that he is putting in, in order to represent the city as well as his profession. The second one is an interesting announcement. So, many of you know that we've had some department heads retire, and we've had some leave to go to other opportunities, and tonight, I'm making a similar announcement about our police chief, who will be departing to go to the FBI Academy in the fall. That is a great, gotcha, didn't I? This is a great honor, and I think that it's something that we didn't see coming, but because of how he is regarded by his peers, especially within the Connecticut Chiefs of Police Association, this has been fast-tracked, and it's not something that typically happens and frankly was not Bristol's turn, because we have had our previous chief, as well as few other members of our department, go. But I wanted to just briefly go over the fact that the timeline for this is that he was just elected to serve as President of the Capital Region's Chiefs of Police Association this past July. They are in the Capital Region, and they are formed to initiate and implement regional programs and policies and procedures which benefit the 32 towns that comprise our region. He was recently nominated and elected into office to serve on the Executive Board of the Connecticut Chiefs, the statewide association, and additionally, he now serves as Chairman of the Statewide Narcotics Task Force Policy Board, which was established in July of 1977 by the legislature to administer cooperative enforcement. And as many of you know, we do often send officers to serve on that task force as well. All of these are a first for a Bristol police chief. And finally, all this has led to the fact that he has been accepted to the FBI National Academy, which is a prestigious professional course of study for U.S. and international law enforcement managers. It is a 10-week program, and it will provide coursework in intelligence theory, terrorism and terrorist mindsets, management science, law, behavioral science, law enforcement communication, and forensic science. And it will also serve to improve the administration of justice and police departments and agencies at home and abroad, and to raise law enforcement standards, knowledge, and cooperation worldwide. So, participation is by invitation only, through a nomination process, and they're drawn from, participants are drawn from every U.S. state and territory and from international partner nations as well. So, it's just a really incredible opportunity. And he'll be leaving in the fall, and his two captains will be taking over in his absence, and so, we will see him back here with all of his newfound knowledge early December. So, congratulations, Chief. We're really, really proud. And for the third brief recognition, I'm going to turn the podium over to our Corporation Council Attorney Clift.
I'd like to ask Jonathan Donovan to come to the podium with me. Jonathan is a, you're going to be a second-year law student now in, at University of Connecticut, and he interned with my office.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. He interned with my office, and I gave him to you.
Yes. And he actually did some very important work for us. I had signed him some research projects that were languishing a bit, and also some cutting-edge things. His research skills were excellent, and actually, I had something for tonight that I didn't get on the agenda, so we're going to have to have him come back next month on e-signatures, okay, that he researched for us.
Well, we could probably do that under New Business. We could bring it up.
Well, I don't have it ready.
Oh, that's.
I mean, I have it upstairs, but there's plenty of time.
Okay.
So, anyway, I just wanted to recognize Jonathan, and, you know, maybe after another, oh, we did have to share him with the Farmington Probate Court as well, but he was a very busy guy this summer.
Yes.
And he's also related to a very good friend of ours, Attorney Jim Donovan, with a law firm in Plainville, so.
And his mother was just here, because she's a park board commissioner.
That's right. So, anyway, it was a real pleasure. Congratulations, and we hope to see you again.
We actually had a great group of interns, and they're winding down for the summer. We have a couple of them through the end of next week. One of them spent the day at the police department because she has an interest in police work, and I just want to thank all the departments who did interact with them. I think they really enjoyed their summer. We're trying to go through and talk to all of them and try to have them be very honest with us about how we can approve that program, but I think that it really helped our office as well with just a lot of things that we always want to get to, we want to look into, we want to research, and we just haven't had time, because as all of you know, we just have one full-time staff person. So, it was really a great experience for all of us, and I hope you enjoyed it as well. So, announcements by City Council members. Anybody want to try to top mine? It's really hard.
I have an announcement. It's not going to top yours, though. If families in Bristol are like mine, I have a special corner in my basement where I keep all my old computers and printers and so forth, so we have a save-the-date for you. We're having a residential electronics recycling event. You can bring your old computers and electronics equipment down to Public Works City Yard on Vincent P. Kelly Road on Saturday, August 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and unload all that unwanted equipment, so please take advantage of that. Thank you.
We actually had one of our Public Works employees have a really good idea about this, because this is a new vendor that we're working with, that we may actually have them come to some farmers' markets as well to make it even easier for citizens in order to recycle this and keep it out of our waste stream. So, save the date on August 25th, and maybe we'll have more information about that forthcoming.
And I just have one announcement. Again, I can't beat the mayor's announcement tonight, but this regards to the Jeff Pierce Memorial Fund Wiffle Ball Tournament. For those that don't know, this is an event, this is the fourth one, I believe, that they're having. It will be held September 15th at Page Park, and the funds from this tournament and fundraising efforts of this group provides funds to, donated to addiction service organizations. Jeff is a young man who died a few years ago, and his friends started this organization. There are still room for about three more teams of wiffle ball players. Teams should be between five and seven people, and it is $200 to enter the tournament, and you all get t-shirts, and there are raffles and food and all kinds of stuff at Page Park, and there is a Facebook page, the Jeff Pierce Memorial Fund Wiffle Ball Tournament Facebook page, for further details. Thank you.
Councilman Proleski.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have one, please. It's been a great, busy summer down at Rockwell Park and Muzzy Field. A lot of baseball played at Muzzy Field this summer, and the camperships, and the summer music series at Rockwell Park has been very successful. It's going to be capped off this Saturday. The West End Association is having its annual summer festival at Rockwell Park from 10:00 to 6:00. A lot of vendors, a lot of music, a lot of good food, a great wholesome family event. Hope you would support the West End Association and visit one of our gems in town, Rockwell Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mills.
Dave just took my announcement, so we're all set.
You guys need to collaborate.
Congratulations, Chief, on all your accomplishments and upcoming training. It's very exciting. I just have a quick announcement. We have a new city event called the Mayor's Back-to-School Pencil Hunt. That's going to be held on Tuesday, August 21st, with a rain date of Thursday, August 23rd, and it's going to be at Muzzy Field. Gates open at 4:00 p.m., and it's, from my understanding, a little bit like an Easter egg hunt, but you're hunting for school supplies, so there's going to be different hunts for kids grades K through 8th. It's free to participate, but we do ask that you preregister through BristolRec.com or call their office at 860-584-6160. There's a number of door prizes. All children will receive a free lunch cooler with snacks distributed by the Bristol Police Department as part of their Packs with Police program. There's a chance to win a number of grand prizes, including Leapfrog Academy, a Kindle, Chromebook, calculators, binders, notebooks, and a lot more. Every child will win some back-to-school supplies. There's going to be a number of community vendors there, and the event is sponsored by our Parks and Rec Department and also the First Bristol Federal Credit Union.
Thank you. I have a couple of quick announcements. The first is, we received good news this week that the city has received a community connectivity grant through the Connecticut Department of Transportation that was worked on by our grants administrator, Don Ledger, as well as Carol Noble, our environmental engineer. We are eligible to apply for this grant from the Connecticut
We are eligible to apply for this grant from the Connecticut Department of Transportation to implement the results of a road safety audit that was undertaken in April of 2017 to identify opportunities to improve road safety for pedestrians and bicyclists in Bristol. The city focused on bike paths, as well as a pedestrian improvement plan from... To... From or to the Memorial Boulevard corridor through downtown Bristol, up to and including the West End and the Rockwell Park area. The grant is approximately $300,000, and will also include ADA improvements to curbs and sidewalks along the Memorial Boulevard, downtown, West End corridor to Rockwell Park. Wayfinding signage that helps direct visitors to the parks, including Muzzy Field, are also items that have been included in the project budget and can be put under consideration. So, again, you know, a lot of work goes into grant writing, and we don't always know when we're going to get them, but this was approved at the Bond Commission last month. I'd like to congratulate Don and Carol for their hard work. It's a really comprehensive grant, and I think it's going to be a great planning tool for Public Works, as well as the Parks Department, as we really start to center in on some of these gateways and corridors that are coming through our downtown. So, this will probably appear for receipt purposes, as well as award purposes on future agendas, but it was just another good news piece that I wanted to share for tonight. We did talk at Joint Board about the fact that there may be remaining funds in the Pine Lake Project bond account, and so, we are investigating that, both with our city staff, as well as the staff at DEP. And we're hoping that we think we have less, but they think we have almost $50,000 that could be appropriated as well. So, in doing some of these cleanup of funds and really looking back at some of these projects, we're finding some interesting things. So, that is something I'm just going to give to Councilman Fortier to share with the Pine Lake Committee when they reconvene in September.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Councilman Kelly has joined us from the Board of Education meeting in process, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Our next item is the consent calendar, and we have several items, A through I. Is there a motion to waive the reading of the consent calendar? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any item on the consent calendar, A through I, that a member of the council would like to call out for special consideration or discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar, A through I? So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to start with the reports and committee reports, with the Ordinance Committee, of which there are five. Councilman Proleski.
Your Honor, can I combine ordinance and real estate for the time being? Councilman Mills warned me that I'll put everyone to sleep if I go through the agenda items one by one. So, what I'd like to do is ask the members to allow me to present, from the Ordinance Committee, Agenda Items 6B through E, and from the Real Estate Committee, Items F through I and letter K, and to waive the meeting... Or the reading of the motions, and to ask the members to accept and approve the Agenda Items as presented for purposes of recording in the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the request to combine and merge and waive the reading of 6B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, N, K. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. As to Items 6A, the reason I think it's appropriate, Your Honor, to read this is because it's for a public hearing. And this is... This, again, is from ordinance. In accordance with Section 21F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances are hereby introduced. I hereby move that the time and place of Wednesday, September 19th, 2018, at 4:50 p.m. in the first-floor Meeting Room, City Hall, 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, to be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the Ordinance Committee, and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the city... A Code of Ordinances of the city, as required by the city charter.
Second. Any further discussion on the motion as presented? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. And with regard to Agenda Item J, it's from the Real Estate Committee. Pursuant to Section 7-163E of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Office of the Corporation Council requests that the city council authorize the Real Estate Committee to set a date for a public hearing on the sale of city-owned properties known as lots 75A-1 Pine Street and lots 75A-2 Pine Street. The public hearing is to be held on September 18th, 2018, at 4:45 p.m. in the City Council Chambers, City Hall, 111 North Main Street, Bristol. The Office of the Corporation Council shall publish said notice in accordance with the Connecticut law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor.
So, 6L is from the Salary Committee?
Yes, Your Honor, I have one motion to approve an upgrade of the School Readiness and Child Daycare Grant Manager position. BPSA salary level seven, $61,057 to $74,826 to salary level eight, $67,136 to $82,280, and to upgrade the position incumbent to salary level eight, Step 6, effective July 1st, 2018, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. I think it should just be clarified for the public that the salary increase is covered by the state grant that covers administrative costs and salaries for that position, and is not city-funded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The last item under Reports and Committees on our agenda is the update regarding the Mayor's opioid task force. We are continuing to work. We will have our brochure ready for distribution at the Rockwell Park Festival, at which we will have a table, to continue to raise awareness for people who are affected by the public health crisis. I also, just of note, received notice that the State of Connecticut received $10 million of a federal grant to increase access to care for individuals with substance use and mental health disorders. And so, this is another piece of medication-assisted treatment that is missing currently from the Bristol community, as well as some other pieces that need to be handled. Because we now have a task force, and we are working in cooperation with our healthcare partners in town, we are now eligible to be considered for parts of this grant that, as they get disseminated out of the state level to local communities, which we were not eligible for before, because there was no community plan. So, for anyone who is attending the Rockwell Park Festival, you could look us... Look up the opioid task force booth. We have a new brochure that is going to be distributed to the community in general about information about what happens to families and resources available. There is a second version of this brochure that is actually going to be used with the police department and our ambulance workers, that if they come upon a situation in a home where they're responding to an overdose situation, this is going to be a flyer that they can leave at that place, so that when family members return from that medical situation, there is actually a resource that has been left for them by emergency responders, that they will also have as a resource. So, Rockwell Park Festival is our first outing as an official task force. Our next agenda item is unfinished business. Do any council members have anything to come forward as an unfinished business item?
I do, Your Honor.
Yes.
I just was wondering what the status of Memorial Boulevard School. I know we own RFP, we're from an architect. Do we have any reports on anything that's happening there? I've had several constituents ask me about the Boulevard, and I really think that we need to get more information on that on a monthly basis, or at least quarterly basis, so we know what's going on. I know that there's lots of concerns for many things as to exactly what's going to happen, and how do we open up the lines of communication on that a little bit further?
Well, I think that we can start by asking Councilman Proleski if there's any updates. I know they didn't meet this week.
You know, that's probably a good idea, Dave. We maybe have that as an ongoing report. The committee didn't meet this week because of the lack of quorum. The... Where we are now is we... The committee has interviewed architects, and they got RFPs through the Purchasing Department for the architectural services for the build-out. And we're at the point now where I think the committee's ready to make a decision, and should probably do so at its next meeting. I don't know if we're going to wait a month, or if they're going to have a special meeting. John, do you know? I think they're thinking about having a special meeting, so that we don't have to wait a month on this. But that's at the point where they are. We've... We had a vacancy on the committee, and the nominating committee of that board met. The nominating committee is Chris Wilson, John Smith, and me. And the mayor suggested a very good name, a retired arts teacher, who will be nominated at the next meeting.
That could be nominated tonight.
Tonight, for seating there. The thought process is to integrate into that panel an art teacher who knows what the classrooms like, and could participate from the... You know, she's in the weeds every day, so she can help us. Mr. Lotavico is a member of the committee, and he's at the podium, so I think he's going to say something.
No, I just want to confirm... John Lotavico, 47 Towne Street. I just want to confirm Councilman Proleski is correct. We had a meeting set for Monday night, which I think is the 13th. Unfortunately, schedules didn't mix. We have it down to four architects, if I'm not mistaken, all very qualified, gave their presentations to the committee. Our next meeting, which hopefully will be a special meeting, because we need to keep this momentum moving forward, is to review, go over, and I would think select. And basically, that's all it is right now, but we have some four... I think it's four fights, four outstanding qualified architects that just submit and gave great presentations. So, I think the next meeting will... We should be able to present the committee... The chairman of the committee should be able to present an architect that's going to move this forward.
Because that whole process could take a while. I mean, not the process of selecting, but obviously, the process of bringing forth the plan, et cetera, so...
Yeah, some work has been...
This could be two or three years out, and, you know, by the time the building gets built, et cetera.
Correct. The timeline in construction and planning and scheduling does... Unfortunately, does take a lot of time. It's got to be planned correctly, scheduled correctly, and implemented correctly. And it will be. There's no doubt it will be. You have some very qualified people that are sitting on this committee, thanks to all you folks and the mayor, and how that we... Everyone was selected, so we're background. So, not disagreeing with you. Hopefully, it won't take that long. But we're... As I was saying, you've got to crawl before you walk, so we're almost walking down the road.
Right. I agree. Again, if we could just maybe get the other side of the coin with the Board of Ed, something from the Board of Ed as to what's going on, and what's being planned, et cetera, because that's under a lot of scrutiny also, a lot of questions about that, as to what's going to happen, who's going to go there, how it's going to be selected. You know, again, I know this is a process. We don't want to... It's going to take time, but we don't want it to jump, and, you know, wait all of a sudden, two years go by, and we haven't answered these questions.
I think there's two parts to your observation tonight, and the first is the building committee's work, which is going to use the state grant that we've received to create a building, which is going to be ADA-compliant and ready for a magnet school, as well as the added benefit of being able to refurbish the theater, which is so important to all of us. But that's only the first piece. And so, I know that Chairman Wilson has spoken to some people, because the next step is creating a committee that is going to create the school that is going to be housed within this building. They're two separate pieces. The building committee is not deciding curriculum. It's not deciding, you know, what grade start, how are they going to do UConn AP classes? Is there going to be a sports team? How are they going to get transported back? All of that has to be decided by the Board of Education. And I believe it is Chairman Wilson's idea that there's going to be a second committee that is going to bolster the work of the building committee, and work almost on parallel paths, but deal with some of those detail pieces, so that all of those questions that were raised at the last Board of Education meeting by existing faculty will be answered, and everybody will know what's happening as we move forward.
Great. I'm glad to hear that. I just wanted to point out that there is some urgency, obviously, you know, our people are very concerned. So, the sooner we can do that, I think the better off that we'll be, and we'll all have some answers.
Was anything discussed about Memorial Boulevard at tonight's Board of Education meeting?
No, it wasn't, Mayor, but if I can just say, everyone has those concerns as well, Dave, and, you know, we're all going to be looking into it and working cooperatively. But you're right, it would be nice to get updates from the Board of Ed, if they have anything to update us on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. I lost my agenda. Unfinished business. Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. I think I tossed my agenda. Thank you. So, new business. The first item under our new business is an update to the council on shared services and regional initiatives. And there's really not much new to report. We have implemented and started going to Plainville on a schedule to do their building inspections, and so, so far, we are in Week Two of that, and it's going well. I believe our chief building inspector is still going on some of those in order to facilitate the rollout of that. We are anticipating a memorandum of understanding from the Board of Education that will finalize the building facilities management integration. I believe it was on their Personnel Committee agenda last night, so that will work its way over, but that is also already working as well. And we are still working on memorandums of understanding for the IT piece. And I have extended a question to the Board of Education as to whether we need one for the insurance piece, which is happening on the third floor. Their employee who handles city insurance is moving over to City Hall at the end of the summer, and our employee will join her at that time. But there is no memorandum of understanding at that point, since they're both still working and reporting exactly the way they do now. When that happens on the third floor, the city employee will actually be transferred from Personnel to the Finance Office, and will report to the Controller, as opposed to the Personnel Director. But other than that, which will be a memorandum with her union, that one is on schedule for the end of the summer. So, that's really the only update that I have, in terms of where we stand on all of those. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. The next item is one that we've dealt with at the Special Board of Finance meeting. We have dealt with it at the Joint Board meeting, because for those of you who were here and heard it, we are trying to be very sensitive to a timeframe in order to accomplish the cleanup at 895... 894 Middle Street. So, under new business, in order to be prepared, last week, when we were creating the agenda, I did ask for this to be placed. At that point, we did not know whether we were going to have successful bids. The bids were opened. We had two of them, and I believe we have a motion to come forward tonight, which is actually not the low bidder. It is the second bid that we received. And I do see that Don Ledger is here. Is there anything you'd like to add at the podium, Don, before we take up this item?
Good evening. We actually had nine bids.
Oh, sorry, nine bids.
Yes, which was really exciting.
Good.
But the low bidder was not qualified, so the second.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions.
So, basically, this is the continuings, the city's activity to clean up 894 Middle Street, a critical parcel across from ESPN. We've been working on this for many years, back... Going all the way back to when I was on the council. And I think that it's critical that we get it to the point where we can, in fact, sell this property. What is it, Don? 17 acres?
17 acres, and we have $1.3 million from DECD to do it.
So, we potentially had a partner who was going to put in some money. That did not materialize due to them not being selected for a state project, and so, now, we are faced with making up that small deficit. And it really isn't enough to really doom this project. So, that's why we decided to bring it forward and really try to fast-track this. So, the motion that has been crafted by the BDA and Roger Rousseau is to award the contract 2C18-069, Earth Excavation and Contaminated Soil Disposal, to Manafort Brothers Incorporated, in the amount of $1,382,672,000, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any such documents necessary to effect such contract pursuant to the terms and conditions established by the grant from the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development. So moved. Okay. So, just for discussion purposes, so everyone understands, this is not the lowest bid. The lowest bid was disqualified, and this bid contained added conditions... Conditional considerations for bid line items. We don't need to know any of that. Okay, what else do we need to know, Don? Do we need to talk about set-asides?
We do not.
Okay.
That's all in the rejected. That's all in the rejected.
Okay.
Suffice it to say that this is the lowest qualified bidder that we are.
Okay. And it's important to get going on this.
Yes, because we need to do this in the weather, weather permitting. It's, once we get going, the job will probably take less than two months.
Okay.
The time to get to this point has taken us two years, but we really need to get going before the weather changes.
Okay. And so we have contingent approvals from the Board of Finance, as well as the joint board pending the outcome of our vote tonight, which will complete the financial process cycle. And will allow you to proceed.
And we have all the permits that we need, we have permits from Army Corps of Engineers, we have everything else in order, we just need shovels in the ground.
Okay. So that is the purpose of the motion, if someone could move it? We did?
We did.
And we seconded it? Okay. Is there any further discussion or questions of Don concerning our activity at 894 Middle Street? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. You're welcome to come down and watch us dig.
Resignations.
Any other new business for anybody?
Oh, sorry. Any new business? I don't think so. Okay. Thanks, Therese. Resignations?
Resignations, Patricia White from the Burgess Pond Hoppers Committee, Deidra Taverra from the Memorial Boulevard Building Committee, and Barbara Callahan from the Youth Commission.
Is there a motion to accept and send letters of thanks?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a few appointments tonight. I am going to start with our tax collector, and it's my pleasure to appoint Ann Bednais as tax collector for a four-year term effective August 16th, 2018.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Ann. To committee assignments, Building Code Board of Appeals to reappoint Philip Vanilla a five-year term to July of 2023.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board of Finance to appoint Nicholas Jones Jr. to replace Derek Sezaluski, resigned an unexpired term to June of 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Inland Wetlands Commission is a mayor's appointment not requiring a second or approval, and I am choosing to appoint Daniel Masaro Jr. to replace Michael Robinson as an alternate member, as he was appointed a regular member to the same commission. This is an unexpired term to September of 2019. We have one more vacancy on Inland Wetlands as an alternate position, which has been vacant for a very long time, and I believe I have some people who are interested, but again, we're always soliciting resumes for people who would like to serve. On the Board of Library Directors, I'd like to make an appointment, request of Nick Jacobowski to replace Jessica Bernier Lee, which was a Section 2-9 resignation, it is an unexpired term to January of 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Magnet School Building Committee to appoint Lori Eschner to replace Deidra Taverra, who resigned, as the citizen representative member.
Move it.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I do have, um, we've been discussing the formation of a diversity council for the last few months. I do have four names, I'm waiting for three more. So again, I'm gonna open it up, since we do have Nutmeg TV here, if there is anyone interested in serving, I would like to have those names and be able to do this for our September city council meeting. And I do have a question for either Corporation Counsel or the city clerk. If we just do a ad hoc task force, do we still look at party affiliations for balance purposes? Okay, so then I definitely need to diversify my diversity council. So there is that. And I have one last appointment, and it is to our 10-year capital improvement committee. We've had so much good feedback from our one community representative that I wanted to add a second, and it is going to be Glenn Hyzer to serve a term for the 10-year capital improvement committee effective this month. I need to have somebody. Do I need that? Or is it my appointment?
In 10-year improvement? I'm not sure.
Yeah, we'll just.
So moved.
I would do it just in a second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we do have to, in the month of August, renew the appointments for our school readiness council, and there are several. So please indulge me as I read them. I believe this is an annual term, Therese, the annual?
Two-year.
Two-year term. So they are in order, Kristen Peck, representing the Bristol Board of Education, Erica Coleman, representing the Bristol Board of Education, Catherine Plord, representing the Bristol Burlington Health District, Peter Kelly as the council liaison, Karen Lombardi, the WIC nutritionist, Donna Osich from the United Way, Amanda Sawyer, who is the director at Bristol Hospital of the Parent and Child Center, Linda Rich from the Family Resource Center, Patricia Thomasick from the Senior Center, Valerie Pelletier, site manager at Head Start, Valerie Toner, children's librarian, Bristol Public Library, Joyce Voizin from the Tunxess Community College Early Childhood Center, Pam Testa, the site manager of Bristol Preschool, Alyssa McGee, ECCP consultant with Wheeler Clinic, Dr. Susan Adainka, who is a pediatrician in town, Maureen Eaton as a community representative, Laura Watson from the Bristol Early Childhood Alliance, Brenda Moore, who is the Ross Coordinator for the Bristol Housing Authority, Lisa Demato, who is representing the panel as the grandparent, Diana Barubi from the McKinney Vento Education of Homeless Children Representatives. And I do believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Kelly, they are looking for additional parent representatives to serve as well. So again, if anybody is interested in the school readiness council, we do have parent slots available. I'd like a motion to approve that slot, that slate of characters that we've just nominated for our school readiness, because we do a great job.
So moved. Second.
Just a point of information, that, that committee meets at 12:15 usually on Wednesday.
Good point. So if you wanna be a parent representative, you have to go at 12:15. Okay. And it's a committee that meets during the day. So there's been a motion and a second. All in favor of that slate?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now moving on to the business portion of our agenda, and the first item is a resolution. So if somebody could be ready?
Sure.
Therese, would you like to read the res, would you like to read the agenda items, or you want me to continue?
It's fine, go ahead.
Okay. Agenda item 11 is a resolution regarding the approval of the grant application for the 2018 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant for $42,000 with the U.S. Department of Justice. Is there a motion?
I have a resolution, Your Honor. Be it hereby resolved that the filing of an application for the 2018 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant to the U.S. Department of Justice is hereby approved, and that the mayor, Alan Zappo Sasu, or acting mayor, and the chief of police, or acting chief of police, are hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this funding slash grant, including but not limited to any final funding slash grant documents, and that the previous execution and filing of said application by the chief of police are hereby ratified. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? A roll call vote, starting on my far right.
Yes.
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 The mayor votes yes. The motion passes. Thank you. The next seven motions are concerning our charter revision process that started in late winter and is now wrapped up. We have motions to accept or reject the reports from the Charter Revision Commission. We've had a joint meeting with them, we have referred items back, and they have now forwarded to our agenda those sections that they are suggesting be placed on the ballot for November. The first one is, the motion would be to accept or reject the final report of the Charter Revision Commission regarding Section 39 of our charter, which pertains to the creation of staggered terms for the Board of Education members. So that proposal is in order to avoid the situation where we would have all members either leaving or not being reelected and leaving a dearth of opportunity and knowledge, frankly, on the Board of Education. So that would be the first item for council action. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I make a motion to accept the final report of the Charter Revision Commission regarding Section 39 pertaining to the creation of staggered terms for the Board of Education members.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion on this portion of the final report? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item 13 is the transmission from Charter Revision regarding Section 56, prohibiting unlawful workplace harassment by elected and appointed officials. Is there a motion to come forward?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to accept the final report of the Charter Revision Commission regarding Section 56 prohibiting unlawful workplace harassment by elected and appointed officials.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion on this motion? And again, for clarification purposes, this is now putting in writing the fact that elected and appointed officials are held to the same standard. Motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item is accepted. Agenda item 14 is to accept or reject the final report of the Charter Revision Commission regarding Section 44 and Section 48A, removing sewage disposal and replacing it with storm sewers as a responsibility of the Director of Public Works. Is there a motion to come before the city council?
Your Honor, I move to accept the final report of the Charter Revision Commission regarding Section 44 and Section 48A, removing sewage disposal and replacing it with storm sewers as a responsibility of the Director of Public Works.
Second.
Is there a discussion on the motion concerning Section 44, Section 48A, and the report?
Yes, Your Honor. As I spoke the last time we had our public hearing, I don't feel that we should be doing this. I just think we need more information. We still haven't done a dollar-cost analysis on this to know exactly what it's gonna cost. There are too many undecided questions here, and I don't think that we should put this on the ballot, because these questions won't be answered, and I don't think they'll be able to be explained to the public. So when they go to vote on this revision, I don't think they'll be able to be, to have an educated vote. So I would urge my colleagues to not vote in favor of this, because these questions needed to be answered.
Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Through the chair, Dave, do you have specific questions?
Yeah, cut, dollar-cost analysis would be one thing. How much are we gonna save? There's a lot of things as far as, um, equipment, personnel, um, other things that I can't, you know, I'm just, uh, have thought about that need to be done. But again, the dollar-cost analysis, why are we doing it? I mentioned this the last time. I think we have two departments that are doing a great job. I think, I obviously know that there's a need to kind of try to consolidate, try to make things more efficient. I don't think this is the place to start. I think there are other divisions that we can start with, with ball fields and fixing up maybe the park department and Board of Ed, et cetera. I don't think this is the place to start, because I think we're talking about two departments that do a great job, and I don't think that we've analyzed it enough to know exactly what we're going to gain. A lot of it is conjecture as to whether or not we're going to achieve these things, and I don't think it's worth doing.
Yeah, and I'll agree with Dave, too. I just feel like without a cost analysis or really an in-depth look at this, I'm just not comfortable with it. I mean, I'm all for looking for efficiencies and ways to improve things, but I know from my experience, I think mergers, division changes, I think they're really complicated when you drill down into it, and I just think without that, I'm just not comfortable with that.
Anything else on this side? Then I can address it. So this was one of my initiatives that got sent to Charter Revision, and it was because we had Charter Revision, and there were charter issues that were preventing the discussion about water and public works and water pollution control. So a lot of the discussions that we're gonna continue to have, especially concerning leveraging resources, ball fields, parks versus Board of Ed, and some of those resources are gonna continue to happen, but when we have a Charter Revision opportunity, the priority becomes those issues that have to be addressed through Charter Revision, or those issues that are prevented from being discussed because of Charter language. So I suggested that they look at this in order to, I think it's more of an efficiency, and I think that from a clarification standpoint, one thing that was disturbing to me is the fact that it became a water versus sewer issue, which it never was intended to be. It's intended to be an efficiencies issue. And the way that I looked at it was that you have a high-performing water pollution control unit and a high-performing water department. They are both enterprise funds, they are both in the road, they both deal with pipes. One pipe's going in one direction, the other pipe's going in the other direction. And many other municipalities have a Department of Utilities. So as I go around the state and I look at these different opportunities and I look at what my colleagues have done, this was something that stood out to me. But it wasn't because of water, or it really wasn't because of water pollution control. What it was because is when you look at the Public Works Department overall, there are eight divisions, and I think we have one Public Works Director, and then we have division heads. And I think that this is a very large scope for our city. And when I look at some of our individual divisions, I see some opportunities for improvement, and I think that if we're able to scale back the breadth of what is responsible within the department to six divisions, and maybe eventually look at those specifically in terms of helping to strengthen them, that's the goal. It has less to do about water pollution control, and it has less to do about water. It has the opportunity to have two divisions that have many like pieces already work together in tandem for a better efficiency. We've already spun off building maintenance and have an integrated system with the Board of Education, so that's one silo that's been taken care of out of Public Works. This would be the next one, leaving six divisions for the Public Works Director. That's a lot. And so from my standpoint, we are actually looking at our core functions, which are our solid waste division, our streets and construction division, our landfill and its operation, our fleet man, our fleet maintenance garage, missing a couple, and there's more. Building administration, engineering, planning and development, all fall under the Director of Public Works. And I think that it's time to look at that, and in looking at that, decide if there's appropriate places to put some of these other pieces. So that's the mindset, and I think that in terms of educating the public, we can do so. And I think when they see that there's some efficiencies that can be gleaned, I think they're gonna be patient with us, and they're gonna understand that it's not really about the bottom dollar amount, it's about the better use of our resources. So even if we were to reject this tonight, I'm not sure that there could be a cost-benefit analysis. It's, it's very hard to measure two departments in terms of how they do this. Could there eventually, through retirements or attrition, be one less position because the back office piece is already being handled for water pollution control by the Water Department? Maybe. But we're not ever looking at this in terms of job elimination. If it happens because an efficiency is there due to a retirement, I think that we would obviously capitalize on that. But it's not about money, it's about efficiencies and looking at other core functions and how we're gonna do a better job with what we're doing. And I feel strongly that the Public Works Department's emphasis on clean and green is something that we need to bolster, and I think this is a way to do it. So I would urge my colleagues to support this charter change and work with me in order to educate the public about why this is better for us in terms of how we do our city services.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I, I agree with a lot of the things you're saying. I just think that, I know that there'll be other opportunities for Charter Revision. This is not the only opportunity it'll have. I think it'll give us enough time to go through this and really analyze what's going on and, and come up with some, some real concrete answers. I think just the fact that it, other towns are doing it, there are a lot of towns that aren't doing it also, and there are a lot of towns that maybe have been doing it for doing it also, and there are a lot of towns that maybe have been doing it for a long time. I know that there's a few that have just started to do this. I just think there's too many unanswered questions. There is going to be another opportunity, this is not going to be the only Charter Revision Committee that's been formed, and I think will have an opportunity in the future, and I just don't think it's the right topic to present at this time.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah, through the chair, you know, I struggle with this one, too, Dave, to be honest. I talked to our Public Works Director, for the last three weeks, I've really tried to drill down, and talked to Charter Revision people, and I talked to Public Works Director, talked to the Water Department Superintendent, and I tried to talk to some of the folks that are doing the work. See, I think the mayor's right, it's hard to quantify, from a dollar-sense standpoint, all these decisions that we make. We've already, you said we were beginning here, well, that's, the truth is, we've done a lot of consolidation, and I think the general public has to understand that. We won't see immediate financial rewards when you consolidate departments like what we're doing for the insurance, what we've done with our information technology, but it's going to happen, both in terms of how our purchasing power is, and how we make decisions day-to-day in City Hall. What swayed me to approve this, were talking to some of the folks on the line who think that one of the best beneficiaries of this consolidation could be the customer service component for people who call in and who, you know, the people who use these functions all the time. So the customer service piece is what was brought to my attention, as well as the effective use of equipment and machinery. I don't have, I'm a numbers guy, I think you know, we've done this a lot in the last few years, but, and there aren't any numbers that I could see, but only from the representations made from investigation and talking to people. So, I'm going to go the other way with you, Dave, on this one.
Again, if I just might, I've also talked to people, as you know, we had two breaks in water lanes in the last week, and, you know, one of the things that we had talked about was the possibility of the water company going out and be able to handle these. Well, if you went out and looked at it, we had outside contractors doing both of those situations.
That's not true.
Demato did both of them, didn't he?
No. We, I think we had a piece of equipment come in because ours was being repaired, but I believe Rob is here, would you like to address outside contractors?
Evening, Council, Rob Longbow. We utilized our workforce through both of those water main breaks, the one on Maple Ave, as well as the one on Farmington Ave. Park Street was an emergency repair for a construction job with DOT. So we had a large main break on Maple Ave, as well as one on Farmington Ave. We brought in an outside contractor on Farmington Ave, because our backhoe was out being repaired at the time. We utilized our older backhoe, which did not have the capabilities to lift up the concrete, so we had to bring in an outside contractor. On Maple Avenue, if you go down Maple Avenue, you'll see the water main did severe damage to the road, we had to bring in multiple phases of equipment that we don't have, and that's why we have an on-call emergency contractor, so that we can bring them in. We did have a break on Burr's Road, we also had a break, I forgot the street, where a water service broke, and we repaired all those with our own staff. Ninety percent of the time, it is our staff, but when we get to an equipment issue or something of that nature, is when we bring in the outside contractor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a...
Can I add one more thing? Your Honor, you know, the other thing, too, when you look at the organizational chart, you know, when you look at how we do business in City Hall, there's so many places I think there, we still can do better, and make improvements upon. When we take a look at some of the functions of maintenance for public works in parks, I mean, there's some really big-ticket items that we still have a lot of work to do, I think, and the mayor's addressing them, and we can go one at a time. And some of this is going to fall, I think, on the shoulders of Public Works, depending on how we reorganize those, so I think we've got to spread that, we've got to make it a little bit more efficient and spread out the responsibilities, and that's another key issue, I think, that, you know, you don't get a number on right away, but, you know, you just look at the org chart and see, you know...
I don't disagree with you, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, I just don't think this is the place to start. I mean, I think we have, we have two departments that are working very well, I think it would be more efficient, in my mind, to go to some of these areas, so, you know, we can agree to disagree, that's all.
That's why we're here.
That's why we're here.
Absolutely.
Any additional discussion? Has anybody made a motion? I've lost track.
Yes, Councilman Han.
Councilman Han made a motion to accept?
Yes.
Was there a second?
Yes, I believe I seconded it, Your Honor.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on item 14, which covers Section 44 and Section 48A of the Charter Report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
So for the record, Councilman Mills and Councilman Maderos have voted no, the mayor votes yes, so that will be five to two. And we will take into consideration all of the concerns as we begin the next piece of rolling this out. Agenda item 15 is to accept or reject the final report of the Charter Revision Commission regarding Section 54, creating an Oversight Personnel Committee and changing the Personnel Director's title to the Director of Human Resources.
I'll make a motion to accept the final report of the Charter Revision Commission regarding Section 54, creating an Oversight Personnel Committee and changing the Personnel Director's title to Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Discussion on item 15?
Long overdue, Your Honor.
I actually have a technical question for Corporation Counsel. As we are beginning the process of advertising for a new Personnel Director, I would like to use the new title, but is that something that I am prohibited to do until after the election?
It's not affected until the voters advertise.
Okay.
Thirty days after.
Fourteen days after.
Thirty, thirty days after, actually. Yes, it's thirty days after the election, if it's voted formally.
Okay. All right, so if that were to pass, we will have to do something there. Okay, is there any further discussion on Section 54? Oversight Personnel Committee and changing the title from Personnel Director to Director of Human Resources? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 16 is to accept or reject the final report of the Charter Revision Commission regarding Section 25, renaming the Joint Board as the Joint Meeting and clarifying the membership and types of bond obligations. So these were some technical revisions that were put forward by our Bond Council, that the Charter Revision Commission was able to accommodate, and I'm looking for a motion to accept or reject that final report.
Your Honor, I move to accept the final report of the Charter Revision Commission regarding Section 25, renaming the Joint Board as a Joint Meeting and clarifying the membership and types of bond obligations.
Second. Thank you. Discussion on the motion? Anybody have any questions concerning 25?
Yes.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 17 is to accept or reject the final report of the Charter Revision Commission regarding Section 4, clarifying the process and types of bond obligations pertaining to the issuance of bond. Same thing as before, technical changes and revisions as suggested by our Bond Council.
I make a motion, Your Honor, to accept the final report of the Charter Revision Commission regarding Section 4, clarifying the process and types of bond obligations pertaining to the issuance of bonds.
Second, thank you. Further discussion on Section 4 of the final report from Charter Revision? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item 18 is to authorize the city clerk to prepare the explanatory text with approval from Corporation Counsel for questions to be placed on the November 6, 2018 ballot.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two executive sessions tonight, and I'd like to ask Corporation Cliff, tell us who will be coming in with us on agenda items 19 and 20.
On 19, Assistant Corp. Counsel Tom Conlon, is, is Tom DiNoto here tonight? Is our assessor here tonight?
No, he's on vacation.
All right, so it'll just be Tom and myself. And on the BPSA, did we have outside counsel, or you just need...
It's going to be Diane Waldron, will be coming in.
Okay, so myself and Diane. Thank you.
Okay, so, do we have a motion?
Motion to go into executive session for items 19 and 20.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Your Honor, also, do you want to do the addenda, there are addenda items?
Do you want us to do the addenda first?
Do you want to do, you can do them now, or you can do them when you come back?
You know, let's do them first. So let's, withdraw your motion?
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, and withdraw your second?
Withdraw my second.
Okay, thank you. We are going to move to our addenda, which has three items on it, in order to be able to come back out and just deal with our executive. Our first item is an authorization for the mayor or acting mayor to execute release of mortgage in favor of St. Vincent de Paul Mission of Bristol, Inc., formerly known as the Bristol Emergency Shelter and Housing Coalition, Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second one is the approval of access and use agreement between the City of Bristol and Town of Southington to allow city engineers to collect groundwater samples from test wells on DePaulo Drive in Southington, and authorization for the mayor or acting mayor to execute the agreement. For those of you who may be new to the council, this is a longstanding cooperative practice that we have with Southington.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last one is the extension of exclusive right-to-sell listing contracts with Keller Williams Realty to list properties known as Lot 35C and Lot 35D Glen Street on Assessor Map 5 for two additional months, and referral to Corporation Counsel and Purchasing Department to prepare and/or review any necessary documents and authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, back to executive session. Can you repeat your motion, please?
Motion to move into executive session for items 19 and 20 of the agenda.
Second.
Discussion on the motion to convene into executive session? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we'll be adjourning into, convening into executive session, and we'll be back hopefully shortly. Okay, is there a motion to reconvene?
So moved, second.
Okay, let the record show that no votes were taken in our executive session. Are there any motions to come forward?
Your Honor, I have a motion to come forward in the matter of number 19, the executive session regarding the litigation of matter of DE Foods LLC, which we did learn is Kentucky Fried Chicken versus the City of Bristol, this was a tax appeal. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a stipulated agreement in the litigation matter, DE Food LLC versus City of Bristol, docket number HHB CV-186043936S, and that the City of Bristol be directed to set the fair market value of the land and improvements at 470 Farmington Avenue at $820,000 on the October 1, 2017 grant list.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other motions to come before the council?
I have a motion, Your Honor. Motion to approve the tentative four-year agreement with the Bristol Professionals Supervisors Association, AFT Local Number 6012, and authorize the mayor, Ellen Zappo Sassu, to assign any documents.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?